The community, we want to support victims and hold abusers accountable. If you recognize that a friend, family member, or coworker is a victim of abuse, it takes courage to know how to respond and where to refer victims for help and guidance.
You can make an anonymous phone call to Harbor House at 407-886-2856 to help someone in your life who's being abused. Just make that call and the professionals at Harbor House can help.
If you see or hear someone in immediate danger, always call 911 first.
It takes courage to say something, but it could be the difference between life and death for a loved one.
It gives me great pleasure to inform you about the Orlando Speakers Bureau, another resource free of charge your city has to offer. Effective citizen communication is a key priority of my administration. The Speakers Bureau is just one of many tools we use to keep citizens informed, engaged, and knowledgeable about city government. I encourage you to utilize our Speakers Bureau at your next meeting or event. For more information and a list of speaker topics, please contact the Office of Communications and Neighborhood Relations at 407-246-2169, or visit our website, cityoforlando.net.
Good morning and welcome to the October 17th workshop of the Orlando City Council. Today, we're going to be focused on the airport. Chairman Calvet gave his state of the airport address at our last, I think it was our last GOA board meeting, and I thought it would be appropriate if he came and shared some of those same remarks with our council. The airport is really, I think, UCF and our airport are probably our two biggest assets in our region, and it's a real economic driver. Some of the stats, has the most domestic service of any airport in the state with direct non-stop access to 88 American cities, served by 44 airlines now, 31 international destinations. Last month, we celebrated its 30th anniversary and had a number of very successful events. And over those three decades, the airport has doubled in size, it's added two new runways, two new air sides. Its passenger traffic has increased by 600% to over 35 million. Chairman Calvet, I'd like to invite you to the podium, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and good morning. This year, and I will be repeating some of the things that the mayor said because, like I said, it was quite impressive of our numbers.
Caesar, why don't we introduce Phil and Marcos and Carolyn as well?
We have Phil Brown, our executive director, and Marcos Marchena, our general counsel, and we have Ms. Fennell, who's our in charge of public relations and really our face of the airport.
And has been there all 30 years, right?
And she was there when it all started. Marcos was in diapers back then, so that's not count. This year, we have truly become a global gateway. We have seen our traffic grow in spite of the tough economic times. International air service additions have stimulated increased passenger traffic as well as made a significant impact on the local economy. Beginning in the later half of 2010 to the first quarter of 2011, the Greater Orlando Aviation Authority has been in transition as we responded to changing economic conditions, the impact of airline mergers such as United and Continental, Southwest and Air Trend, and it'll probably be a little while before they can operate Southwest and Air Trend on a single certificate. Global alliances, Sky Team with Delta and 13 other airlines, including Air France, which just launched a new service here this summer. A transition of elected and appointed officials and customer service expectations and confidence. There was also transition on the Greater Orlando Aviation Authority Board. Meanwhile, the authority has remained flexible in order to react to changing circumstances. So today, I wanted to update you on the state of the airport. Our discussion will include an update on passenger traffic, air service, and our growing role as a global gateway, infrastructure development, and a subject very important to me, fiscal stewardship. As a banker, I look very closely at our debt ratio and as a former treasurer of the authority, and very focused on our finances. It is with pride that I can report that we have an excellent staff that are really counting the beans. We will also announce a new initiative on customer service, and as we look to our future, we're moving forward with a master plan that will direct our development plans for the future, and a strategic plan for operations and meeting the needs of our customers based on interviews with more than 44 stakeholders now that number is in excess of 50. There are groups including airlines, airport tenants, hospitality, and civic groups. These are the numbers on airport activities so far this year. 34.9 million passengers in calendar year 2010, an increase of 3.5%. 24.4 million passengers August calendar year 2011, plus 2.68%. Domestic traffic, 22.06 million, plus 2.33% through the month of August. International traffic, 2.35 million, plus 6.09% through the month of August. Very important to note that more than 100,000 passengers travel through Orlando International Airport on a daily basis. Despite this sluggish economy, rolling month total of 35.5 million passengers, which is plus 4.06%, of that, domestic traffic plus 3.81%, international traffic plus 6.52%. Air traffic increases have been most notable on international routes this year. We're pleased to report that passenger traffic remains in growth mode despite this sluggish national economy. The largest growth sector has been international traffic. International traffic has been growing most steadily since 2002. In fact, at the end of 2010, more than 3 million passengers used Orlando International Airport as an international gateway, and that was the highest number ever in the history of the airport. Although domestic traffic has driven passenger growth over the past 30 years, this past year, international passenger rose considerably. The results are Orlando remains the third-largest domestic origin and destination market in the United States and the largest in Florida. In the case of the domestic, only behind Los Angeles and Las Vegas. In fact, as the mayor mentioned, with scheduled service to 84 U.S. destinations, Orlando has more scheduled non-stop service than any other airport in Florida. For example, Miami has only 52. With several new international routes launched this year, MCO now has a non-stop service to 31 international destinations. And as you will know, it is very difficult and very time-consuming and lengthy in order to get international carriers to come to fly directly to a city. New international service recently launched included Air France to Paris, and that flight started on June 7th. On June 21st, while I was in Budapest, I flew from Budapest to Charles de Gaulle in Paris, and from there, I took the flight. And I'm happy to report that probably in excess of 85% of the flight were tourists coming here to Orlando, so that's exactly what we're looking there. And it was a large plane. It was a 777-300 plane, so like I said, it had a lot of passengers in there. Edelweiss Air to Switzerland, Caribbean Air to Port of Spain, Trinidad, Avianca to Bogota, Colombia. Future additions announced include Caribbean Airlines to Kingston, Jamaica in September, and airlines adding seasonal service to Santiago, Chile. Viva Aerobos to Monterrey, Mexico in November. There was strong community support to welcome the new services to our airport. Projects continue that add efficiency and convenience for our passengers. Even with challenging economic times and funding resources, in 2010, there were more than 114 projects at a cost of $55 million. In calendar year 2011, paid-to-date construction costs totally $33 million. Projects included airfield, operations, and customer service projects. Airfield projects are ongoing that will enhance our capacity for aircraft activity, including our ability to handle next-generation aircraft such as the A380. Recently, the world's largest aircraft was diverted to Orlando due to weather in Miami and was accommodated on the west side of the airfield. So this confirmed that we can handle the next-generation aircraft, and that airplane had 522 passengers onboard and a crew of 24. Restrooms were renovated and restored throughout the main terminal. Phil Brown took action right away and increased the frequency of cleaning. This was an area of increased focus on passenger surveys. Escalators and elevators were replaced that increased capacity and vertical circulation in the main terminal. Just moving them a little bit faster can increase the capacity of those elevators and the escalators. In the ticketing lobby and airline processing area, improvements were made to increase efficiency and information access. Probably, the largest project undertaken was completed this year was the inline baggage system, which consists of baggage belts retrofitted after 9/11 to remove the large explosive detection system equipment out of the ticketing lobby. This year, with installation of the system for use by Air Trend and Delta, baggage can now be processed out of the public areas. With approximately 50,000 bags per day handled, the largest construction projects were on baggage units. We've got to realize that in the case of the baggage, based on the old contract on the signatory airlines, those belong to them. Based on the 2008 contract with the airport, those now belong to GOA, so we have began the replacement of 14 of those baggage handlers, and five of those have already been remodeled and retrofitted. With increasing international passenger traffic, it was very important that we have a project that would improve the international arrivals process from Air Side 1, just as was done on Air Side 4. This will reduce the requirement for double baggage handling for international arriving passengers. The Air Side 1 Stairway Corridor now leads passengers directly to the automated people mover station. The corridor is complete with an art installation that traces and welcomes passengers by introducing the springs that stream underneath the bustling activity of central Florida. Fiscal stewardship is a key goal for the authority. Our budget for fiscal year 2010 is $386 million, and we were here for a couple of those workshops, that require approval by our board, which was done at the last board meeting. The budget reflects a 5.25 cost per enplan passenger for our airline partners, which is below the 25 percentile for large airports. Very important that we maintain that fee as low as we can in being realistic. For example, in the case of Miami, that fee is $17 plus per enplan passenger. And very important, like I said, to airlines because of the case of the tourism, those tickets are not the most expensive tickets that are there. And we will finish our debt service coverage at a healthy 1.60, and we expect for the next fiscal year, we'll end around 1.50, 1.55. Fiscal year 2010 budget reflects an important part of our mission, which is again, as I said before, fiscal stewardship. The goal continues to maintain a ratio of airline contribution to revenue of 30% to non-airline revenue of 70%. And as you can see there from the pie chart, car rental fees, parking concessions are, of course, the main contributors to that 70% non-airline revenue. By maintaining a competitive cost per enplan passenger that attracts new services and maintains current levels of service, air service access to the region stimulates increased levels of passenger traffic. We're very pleased that the authority maintained its high credit ratings from all three agencies, S&amp;P A+, Fitch AA-, and Morris AA-3. In the area of employee development, employee training was also a goal by Phil Brown, and as a result, emergency and continuity planning were an important part of employees becoming professionally prepared. These programs ensure that employees are aware of how to handle emergency situations, whether a single incident or a long-term impact situation. Another pilot program is the American Association of Airport Executive Certification Training of Employees to be Airport Executives. These programs were initiated on airport site, and already four employees have passed the course and others will follow. GOA staff continues its outreach to cultural activities and community service events. The authority will continue to promote and pursue innovative ways to foster business opportunities for small and minority-owned businesses. We just had an event on October 7th, and we had in excess of 250 individuals representing themselves and companies on how to do business with GOA. Customer service is an important focus of our airport and community. For that reason, our goal is to use innovation, training, and quality to maintain a leadership role in the industry in this area. We also want to develop facilities that provide excellence for passengers and users to meet the growing demand and customers' expectations. We're pleased that this year, we were selected by the Department of Homeland Security and visited by Assistant Secretary Douglas Smith as a model port in the country for international arrival. There were 17 model ports selected by the Department of Homeland Security, and we will be the model port for those 17. Plans are underway, and a number of improvements have been made in the international arrivals facility that includes new signage, artwork, and customer service features. Easier access to appropriate documents has been coordinated, and as you can see there, of course, the flags make it a lot easier. Staffing has been added to assist international visitors with the language requirements, and this has been very well received. And I experienced that when I mentioned I came from Paris and how they were handling and supporting the international visitors coming in. And this leads me to introduce a new program, initiative, that I feel is important for our main terminal. We have been recognized for our customer service, and it is a reputation that we want to enhance. The program would, number one, train all batch employees in positive customer service practice, give them a sense of ownership. Number two, develop an interactive customer service training for GOA employees. And number three, add personnel to assist passengers at key decision point in the main terminal. This program was included as a line item in our 2012 budget. We have plans to continue our role as a transportation leader. So you can see that we have had a productive year. However, there's much more to accomplish. For the future, our plans are for approval of the master plan for facilities in order to meet and support the region's economic development. Update our strategic plan with input from community stockholders, as I already mentioned. Enhance customer service focus by understanding customer needs, branding, and training and organization to meet those needs. And develop a plan of operations, mission, and goals that encourage the use of this airport as a gateway. Our vision: Advance Orlando and the region as the premier intermodal transportation gateway for global commerce. And our mission: To provide safe, secure, customer-friendly, affordable transportation services and facilities that promote the Orlando experience. In closing, I have given you the state of the airport, which addresses a financially clean bill of health, a new customer service initiative, and the ability to handle future transportation needs. In other words, Mayor Dyer, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I feel the authority, I strongly feel the authority is in an excellent position for the future, and thank you for the opportunity to address you today.
Thank you, Chairman Calvet. You know, it's a pleasure to serve on the GOA board. I'm now actually the longest-serving member, but there's, in my opinion, and there's no other organization that has better vision and long-term planning than GOA. Decisions are made not looking at next year or even five years out, but really 20 and 50 years out. You can tell that based on how the airport has been able to grow. There are other airports that didn't make the type of decisions that we have made 10, 15, 20, 30 years ago. The other thing, I'm always so proud to fly back into our airport because it truly, it's our gateway. It's the first thing people see when they come in, and there are other airports. I flew to New York a couple of weekends ago, and flying into LaGuardia or JFK is not quite the experience that you get when you fly into Orlando, and that's the beginning of an experience for somebody that's visiting here. And then the last thing, Rick Goins made a good point at the business forum that we had about where the growth is going to be in the future, and it's not in the U.S. Our population is shrinking as a percentage of the world total, and Asia and other markets are where the growth is, and we need to continue to focus on expanding our international service, not just for tourism purposes, but for business and economic development purposes, as you mentioned, commerce. So I encourage all of us to stay focused on expanding our international business. We've got Commissioner Linham and then Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Mr. Calvet, someone I've known about 28 years, maybe 30, at which time I became interested in the airport, and I'm very, very happy that you are the chairman. And it's a great report. We're moving forward, but I think the community also needs to know, in this council, whether they care or not, about the things I've talked to you about, and you were so gracious to help. 30 years ago, almost 30 years ago, one of my dear girlfriends, an African-American woman, opened as a vendor at the airport, the very first one, Ms. Walden. She was a Delta, and we've been, we were so happy. That moment to this moment, I have monitored the participation of African-Americans and other minorities in the airport, and I have personally seen a drastic decline, not in partnerships and joint ventures, because the big boys have sort of taken over, but I have not seen this kind of decline in Denver, Colorado, for instance, where 11% of the population are African-Americans, and they have over 40% business-owned operators. And I came to talk with you before you were the chairman about this. I noticed also, the last, since Jackie Bradley, there's no African-American on the board, which is not your fault, that's up to a governor. We had Charlie Crist, and we've got the governor now, what's his name? But anyway, I think to be progressive with our economic components, our international component, we've got to keep a balance, and there is no balance at this point, in my opinion, on African-Americans who actually own their space or rent their space, maybe it's a clause. And I know there was some fear of retaliation or suing by the airlines, but I have not seen this in other states. I'm not, you may want to speak to it, but I followed it through online and through your staff, and I'm very happy with the staff there, but there has been, well, that's not true either, but there has been this drastic decline in African-Americans. What created that situation? Why we don't even have an African-American on the GOA board? Can you just speak briefly? I know you've been on the board, this is your second year?
No, this is our three years.
You went to your third year.
Well, and I can speak to the board. There are two members, myself and the mayor of Orange County, who are automatic pursuant to the state legislation, and then the governor makes the other five appointments. And after Jackie left, the governor, or this current governor, made three, no, this current governor has not made any appointments.
It was Chris.
Charlie Crist made the last appointment, so there are renewals that are coming up in the spring, I believe.
There will be three appointments. When I went in, in 2008, my term is over next year, around April, and then the governor can reappoint me or not. There's four-year terms. When I went on board in 2008, I believe there were 29 applicants for the board, and for three positions, which were, at the time, from Jose Colom. There has to be one representative from Osceola County.
One from Seminole.
Not a requirement.
Right.
Not a requirement, but they normally have someone from Seminole, and then I was in there for Orange. But there were 29. I don't know, I know some of the people that made up that pool of 29. Remember, we had to go all the way to Tallahassee to be interviewed, but I wouldn't know how many African-Americans, how many other Latinos were in that group. I don't know why, and the second time, when there were two, you know, again, that's, as we all know how that is, so I don't know what caused the governors, the two governors, or the governor in the case, Charlie Crist.
Commissioner, I intend on having a conversation with Governor Scott about that when it comes up. Not that he necessarily listens to my opinion on things of that nature, but I am going to make sure that it's brought to his attention.
And thank you, Mayor, because I have brought it to his attention. I've sent letters, I've done everything. I just think with the changing times, and you know this, everything I'm saying here, like I said, I've known Caesar Calvet, his family for years and years, a great fighter for human rights in this community, and we served on the Human Relations Board when it was a great board. But it is wrong to progress and have these issues, even with the vendors that says, "Well, it's not required to have African-Americans as a part of this." And so what we do now is take the big companies and then their joint venture with someone who has no money and kill them off. But I just think, and we celebrate this great victory, economically it's phenomenal, but I saw the movement, and I saw it within even some of GOA staff, literally helping the demise of African-Americans at GOA. And I'm just, that's the only part of GOA. I have been, all of my work through the years, engaged in not only African-Americans, but other minorities, but even the minorities helped kill off the minorities. I am so happy with your report. It's a great report, but it can't be that great when there's been a great disservice. Not African-American on the board, not, these vendors have been diminished down to maybe, what is it, like three, four from 12 through the years. And so it's like there is something happening in our economy and in our consciousness that says it's okay to not be greatly integrated and to be, to have balance in our, when we look at the audience of great, whether it's Latinos, Hispanics, or African-Americans, whether it's women and men, and that has always been my fight. As a matter of fact, I learned it with you. I really became a part of that fight in the 80s when we served here with Albert Nelson and the city that was a great fighter for human rights. And I have been so angry about that through the years. I mean, even now, you don't even serve on the East Swiss Expressway. There's not an African-American over there. After 30 years. So it's like, I don't know whether the Tea Party has taken over, or what kind of party has moved in here and said, "It's all right to do crazy stuff and disallow and avoid the presence of certain people." So I'm saying to you in this public forum, I'm happy that you are the chairman, and we had helped the past chairman be that chairman. I don't know what happened under his leadership. He just went, something happened, I don't know, became angry. I don't know what happened to Jeff, and he served three terms, so you are at least entitled to two, so that's something you've got to take up with the governor. But I'm happy with the report, the economic side of it, but on the humanities side of it, I feel empty and ashamed because we put a lot of work in under Bill Jennings, under his leadership. There was great balance, there were great programs, Bill Jennings and Darrell Benton, and when they left, it's like there was a black hole. and when they left, it's like there was a black hole, and everybody didn't talk about it, and you know what I'm saying, and I'm not trying to. I know you, and I know your mission, and I know what you want to do for small businesses, and I've seen you do that, but there is something, we have got to move forward. I heard Mayor Dyer said he's going to talk with the governor, but there are some things can be done at the airport when you just lift up and go into a marathon, I don't care to, get things right in terms of participation, not just participation, but real vendors coming back into the airport. Because by the time you count the dollars down when you're a joint venture, you may or may not make any money at the end of the year. As a matter of fact, you're going to make, just a tiny bit, a little or nothing. So I appreciate it. This was a forum I wasn't looking forward to because I love you, I appreciate you, we've been friends for 30 years almost, but the airport has got to do the right thing as it has always done, used to do, to make sure there is great representation of African-Americans who helped build it, who were there in the beginning, and Hispanic and Latinos. But right now, my focus is the absence of African-Americans. Thank you.
If I may, if I may say that, you know, I've only, I can only speak for the time that I have been there, but I have seen some, you know, great examples of entities that started very small and have grown. And, you know, we make a point to actually put a percentage for minority and disadvantaged on, really on the contracts of Goa. And, you know, one example that I'd like to, to mention that has happened while I've been there is the issue with, with Loop Capital that became from a very small entity in investment banking that Goa was one of the first contracts that grew onto an entity in Chicago of 250 people with a very good local representation. And there, on, we have had two replacement bond issues, and on the one prior to the one the other day, the one before that a couple of months before. They were the senior underwriters on that capital, I mean, which, they were in line with, with the Citibank, they were in line with Morgan Stanley, JP Morgan and all that, so you see that. You also see it in construction, I just had lunch the other day with Ariel Burns down, down the street on Gore. And like I said, he is one of the steady contractors because he does very good work. And like that, really, Commissioner Linham might, you know, go on. And the issue there also is to, is to balance it also concerning the, the Hispanic Latinos who really were not, not much, you know, really a lot of representation before. But I feel since I've been there that Goa makes an effort. I cannot do anything about the governor's appointment.
You know.
You know, and I'm.
I know, I know.
And, but in the case of the other, of the contractor, I see, I see the effort and really truly validating, not just hearsay or whatever, the department makes sure that if there's, these people are really certified minority of disadvantage prior there. If not, that entity has been thrown out, and we have done that, in which we have thrown that, that contract, even if it was in, in the case, the better money-wise, it had been thrown out because of the fact that it did not comply.
And I really appreciate that under you, and I know Ariel Burns, he did the prototype for the restrooms and didn't get the contract to build the rest of them. But that's okay because it's moving forward and percentages, I understand that, and we do that here in the city, but the idea of, at the airport, to have real vendors, people who own their business, at the end of the day, if you have a dollar, they at least get $5, $0.5 out of the dollar, whereas if you're a percentage of it, you may get zero at the end of the day, when you look at each component of a dollar when it's spent at the airport, if you're a joint venture. That's all, I mean, I, I understand that, and I'm proud of the efforts for participation. Participation means you may be there, you may or may not. And I know the Ariel Burns and some other people who have worked in there, but the real vendors who own their stores, like Johnny used to own, and now he has, even Johnny Rivers had the joint venture with somebody to make things happen for him, and it was like very, very sad to see the, the different ones, the Sheila and all of them, just lose their businesses through the years. And she's a white woman out of Atlanta, so I'm concerned about the women, the African-Americans and others, but I know under your leadership, you are a small business advocate, no matter who they are. So I appreciate that, but I'd just like to see some emphasis placed on people who really helped make the airport what it is and not start excluding them as we become more international. Thank you so much for a great report.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Mayor, thank you for your leadership, and thanks to all those from this council who have, have joined in that official leadership over the past 30 years. It has been, get a chance to look back over 30 years, it was a wonderful event out there the other day.
Let me, a couple of quick questions I'd like to just kind of have you kind of help out with in terms of those that are listening. We put a lot of energy trying to bring airlines and routes into here, and I know it takes a great deal of effort, really from economic development and from you and from the city, as well as the local community. I guess the question really is, is how do they evaluate those to keep those going? Are they coming in for a one-year contract, a five-year contract? How do we, it's not just good enough to get them here, I think, you got, we got to keep working. You guys do a great job from that, but, but a lot of that energy is really the travel coming into here that we don't have a lot of control over. Tell me a little bit about how, what goes on after.
You know, every airline, of course, will be different. You take for, and Vicky Hadameyo, who's the marketing director for the airport, Vicky says that it's not a sprint, it's a marathon to bring an airline here.
Exactly.
Take, for example, the Air France, well, that has been going on for, for years to try to get it. And finally realizing that in the case of Air France, people could come in from around 50 different locations and go here and leave from here, or, or come here and then go out from this point. So to them is what kind of a load they're going to have on the plane. Take, for example, the airlines, take, for example, in the case of Landchili. Landchili and soon will become Landchili and Tem, which will become the seventh-largest airline in the world. They are very, very interested in cargo. They're going to come next year, January, February, they're going to do a test, they're going to run some flights here, but they're very interested in how much cargo can they bring or take back. I mean, they built with assistance from either the state or the, or the federal government, a huge refrigerated, one of the facilities over there in Miami, a cargo facility. So it depends, they say, okay, I can bring passengers, but then what can I put in the belly of the plane that is not just luggage? So that's the thing there. So take, for example, then another example, Lufthansa. I was on the, what was then the Convention and Visitor Bureau, which is now Visit Florida. And even when I was there, it took a few years after I, I left that board to eventually get Lufthansa to come here. And then, of course, Siemens, that was a big plus there, get a commitment from Siemens to use the airline, and also in the fact that they can do a lot, that's an airline that has first class and business class. And those are, you know, the actual affairs that they're looking for. Because as I mentioned in my talk, the, this is a tourist destination, so we, we have to deal with, for the airlines in volume, in order for them to, to make some money on coming here. So it all depends on who is coming, what are they looking at the numbers? Vicky Hadameyo, she just came back from, from a, a group, it's a meeting, not a convention, but a meeting, in which she had 14 different appointments with the planners of routes for the airlines. They're the ones, not the CEO of the company, he or she may approve it, but those, those planners are the ones that are going to go to the board and say, Orlando is a good place to start it once a week, two times, three times, four times a week. So that is why, so it's for them to, how they load on that airplane. I mean, take, for example, and then take Tem. Tem is just, they have no more, you know, more planes because of the situation that is happening with Airbus and with Boeing. There's a backlog of delivery of planes, serious backlog, so they don't have planes to add more flights. I mean, those flights on Tem, I was looking the other day at their, a couple of their flights full. And the day that we had the event at the airport, the community open house that we did, I was talking with them, and they said that they, they were moving people from coach to coach to, to business, and they also have first class, and from business to first class because they were full in the back. Okay, so that's what you have there. Now Tem, they also told me, the station manager here, they have become the number one station for Tem in the world, more than Miami, more than, Orlando number one, Milan, Italy number two. So it shows you there that, and they tested, they tested the, the flights here, so many, and then they have kept on adding more flights. And we need the help, and we got help from, from Washington concerning being able to handle their additional flight, because Customs, Border Protection did not have the, the staff in order to handle another flight. So those are the things there that we had to, our good friends in Washington that came to our rescue there so that we could add an additional Tem flight.
It just seems sometimes that the easy part is the part getting to come, and the hard part is getting them to, to be here more often, to, to expand their role. The single flight is difficult, but that, at the long term, that may be the easiest thing to do, to test it, especially in a market our size. But, but the idea of getting a gateway into the United States through Orlando is a, is a strong gateway.
Well, so far we have been, you know, we have been very fortunate that they test us for two, three times, four times, and then it becomes seven days, and sometimes two flights a day. So, so that's what's happening. And if, for example, if the visa waiver takes place with Brazil, in which will facilitate the ability to be able to obtain a visa, that's going to be something else.
Let me ask you about the baggage. You mentioned about the fact that the agreement's in 2008, we took over the baggage control, I guess, from the airlines.
The, the actual equipment.
Right. And I know you've done some projects to, to upgrade that. It was, thank you for spending some time out there. I think, Rick, you invited me out, and it was wonderful to see that. How, how is that going? I guess the question, I know that, that deep down inside is, what more expenses do you expect? Are we about built out now on baggage, on baggage handling, or are we still need to do some more work there?
No, we still got, you know, 14 units, so like I said, we've done about five, so we have more to do there.
Okay.
The, the great thing about the airport is that we have capacity for 10 million more passengers before we have to go to a, to the South Terminal, which are already designed and all that. So we have, we have quite a bit of capacity there. This system, of course, will be better, as like anything else, just like the escalators and the elevator, a little bit faster, then it increases capacity. So this, the same thing with these units, break less and also move a little bit faster. So that's something that, it was not a priority for the airlines when, because of the tough times they have been, it's been like, you know, like a circle for them, good times, bad times, something like that. So this was not a priority, so now we're having good, good equipment there to, to get the baggage handled.
Now, we, we charge roughly, I guess, it's overly simplistic, I don't mean for it to be, we charge 5.25 per passenger coming in.
Passenger going on the plane.
On the plane. And the idea is that we, we handle baggage now, but I guess the, the long-term plan was that we would, if the baggage, if the airlines handled the baggage, then the fee could go down. We have continued to maintain a very competitive fee and handling the baggage as part of that cost, is that right?
The, the baggage, the people are handled by the airlines, the people unloading and loading.
Okay, just the equipment is us.
Equipment is ours.
Okay, okay. All right, good. Well, I am so proud of the work that's there. I, I know that it's my hometown, and when I come back, I always feel a little bit safer, a little bit better on my own property. But I'll tell you something, it's, the people I talk to around the country, they are thrilled with how we handle people coming through there. Their only complaint is, is a little bit longer walk, but they figured out, in most cases, by the time you get from one place to the other, everything's there, ready for you, waiting for you, so the.
Well, giving you an example, Mayor said about the vision of all those people that were involved in the, in the authority and the staff. In Miami, I visited the other day, there was a, a kind of a hearing in Miami about intermodal transportation. And I went over there, went early in the morning so I could, you know, kind of kick the tires on the new American Airlines terminal in Miami. Miami handles a little bit over a million passengers more than Orlando. At one time, we had handled more than they did, about probably a couple of years ago, three years, they've handled more, about a little bit over a million passengers more. American Airlines, to go from the last gate to get your baggage or to come down to the terminal, you travel in excess of one mile by a tram, okay? Look Orlando, you take that short time over, short distance to the tram, the tram to the main terminal, you go to your baggage compared to a place that had a cost of over $6 billion to do that. So it shows you how well our airport was planned 30 years ago.
That's great. Thank you very much for your work, and thank you for you and your staff, the work that you have done to make our community just a great place. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Diamond, then Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Can you talk a little bit about transportation planning and what your thoughts are as far as helping people get to and from the airport more easily, especially as the number of people flying out of the airport or into the airport increases?
Well, we're hoping that, you know, based on Sun Rail, that we will have a connector between the Sand Lake Station, which is the last station in Orlando, and the airport. Not only because of our passengers, but also while Goa has about approximately 640 employees, there are 17,000 people that work at the airport. And it would be great to be able to connect by rail to the airport and transfer them from Sun Rail over to the airport. There have been, you probably have experienced a company called Maglev that has been trying to do something, and they have a, a test unit over there outside the south of the Atlanta Terminal, in which they're, they would like to see the Department of Transportation grant them rights to go on some highways at no expense to the taxpayers. And that will be a way, what they propose is to go down to, close to Universal, and do a similar, a similar service as the Disney Magical Express, in which you buy your transportation, your ticket and all, and all that, and it transports you from the airport. Based on their study, every eight minutes, a unit, a train will leave the airport and go to that facility close to Universal. We don't know, there have not been anything formal, nothing can happen unless they come to an agreement with FDOT. And they, there's, there's another way of connecting from the Sand Lake to the airport. But again, we don't know what is happening. They have not been to see me in probably over a year, they made two, two trips to, to see me. But we hear that there's, there's a chance that we could go from, aside from that, we could go from Sand Lake over to the airport. And then the beauty of it, you know, again, as, as the mayor said, that the planning was done years ago in order to, on those bridges, to have space in order to have trains go there without having to add to those bridges. And then we could do an intermodal station over in, let's say, where the South Side, the South Terminal will be going, and then eventually, when there's a need, you could attach the South Side Terminal to that train, what we call a train station there. So like I said, it, it is extremely important that we do that, that we do something eventually from the medical city, as the medical city grows, that we could, we could actually get people in and out of the airport by, by, by train, which will be the, probably the fastest way.
Yeah, and I, and I think it works well for other cities that have air, trains going into their airports like Atlanta and, and many others. Let me ask you, just along those lines, I think you had said that the current terminal could handle about 10 million more passengers. What do you think, when do you think that benchmark's going to be hit?
Well, Mr. Brown, can you have any idea when that 10 million could be hit?
All depends on when, how fast you think it grows. But I would like to say, we've talked a lot about that $45 million or 45 million passenger threshold. The thing about an airport, it has a bunch of systems that have to work together, and I would tell you that was sort of a nominal figure. I think we're going to have to look very closely, which is why we started this master plan update, to get a better handle on when that's going to happen. So we've got a process, and we're looking at five, 10, 20 years out and all of our facility needs to estimate when that's going to be. And I, I think I would be telling you all something that was, was not completely forthright. I told you. I told you, when we hit forty-five million passengers is the number. We have to look at things like the inline baggage system, the capacity on the curb, things like that, to make a reasoned judgment about providing those facilities. I will tell you that that's going to be part of this master plan update, so when that process is over, we should have a predicted fix on when that, that expansion is going to occur. But that's also based on what our assumption is on growth. And right now, we are, we've been fortunate, I think this year, we were running about thirty-five and a half million passengers annually, as the chairman said, that's about three, three and a half percent of where we were last year. But it's been sort of soft the last couple of months. So you have to sort of look out at what's happening with the economy and judge where demand is for, for people to come to Central Florida.
I mean, it seems like if you're looking at three percent, you've, you've got a good amount of time, but if you use a higher number, you get there a lot faster.
I think what, what we've seen over the last couple of years, particularly with recession, is the, the double-digit growth that we experienced in the past is not there. I think from the last financial feasibility report that we had for a bond issue, estimated that beyond 2016, we would grow about 2.1% annually. Again, that's an estimate based on circumstances that were in place, you know, twelve months ago. I think we'll be happy to keep on the positive slope, to tell you the truth.
Yeah. Well, and I think also, the, the history has been that you might have a big increase, but then you might have a decrease, and it's not a straight line. It's, you know, it's a pretty bumpy line, I think, generally, as far as the growth projections, and, or at least the reality is, you'll have some very good years, then you'll have some years that aren't quite as good.
That's exactly right. If you look at the historical, it, it's not a smooth curve. There's, I guess, regression analysis you can do to sort of get that smooth curve, but the practical matter is, it goes up and it goes down. I think all in all, it looks like we've got strong underpinnings to continue to grow, as long as we continue to focus on bringing in additional air service, because we think that's where the economic impact is. But the part, you know, the corollary to that is, we have to have the facilities and keep the facilities we have in, in shape to accommodate that traffic.
And, and just to make sure, when you, when you talked about the linking the train to the airport, were you saying you'd have to have a south terminal to do that, or you could have the facility in place and build the south terminal to be next to it, or is there another option?
No, no.
What we're doing right now is, we're actually working on the alternatives analysis with FDOT to see how that commuter rail can hook in. Based on the preliminary work we did with the high-speed rail station, it seems to make the most sense right now to look at a south terminal location for the train to come in.
And then try to shuttle people from there to existing?
We'd have to come up with the ability to link that to the north terminal. It, it's very complicated and probably expensive to link into the north terminal. And the, the way that was laid out originally was that you were always going to have a link from the terminal to the south, and that probably gives you the most flexibility about being able to go from other destinations beyond the airport, if you're coming from Sand, Sand Lake Road, and you want to go to Medical City, or eventually, you know, there's folks that have talked about eventually going to UCF. But it makes more sense in terms of your flexibility to look at a south, south terminal location for that station.
Okay.
Not the, not the entire south terminal, Joseph Peace. Then you could attach the terminal to it.
Later on, when conditions warranted. Yeah, okay. Let me also ask you, one, one topic of, of interest in, in my district is the development plans for the property south of the beach line and west of Narcisse Road, and then also there's interest in all the property south of the airport, known as the Poitras property. Could you give a brief update on your thoughts and your plans for, and, and timetables for that?
Well, as you know, Commissioner, we've been working with the neighborhoods over there.
Come on up to the mic.
I'm sorry. We've been working with the neighborhoods over there. We're still in the process of going through an environmental assessment for the, what we call the East Airfield, which is that property, used to be known as the GB property. We are still working through some issues with FAA. There are a number of questions that have come up, we're working through that. Eventually, that has to come to the city for a DRI process. We are not ready to do that at this point. What we've looked at is aviation support. There are some concerns that the neighbors have over there. One of them was a fuel farm. There are some noise issues that they've had concerns with. Rob Branshaw and our Senior Director of Engineering and Planning has been working with the neighbors, as well as FAA, just trying to address all of those issues. Ultimately, what we're looking for is an opportunity to provide some aviation support. When Chairman Calvert talked to you about our model, where we have seventy percent of the revenue generated from non-airline sources, that property development is essentially, in the long term, what we're looking at, to, to sort of offset the, the costs that the airlines have to pay. With regard to the Poitras property, we are actually going through a process right now with our consulting engineers to look at what's the best use of that property and how we get the best value out of it. So that, that's yet to be determined, as we do, how we do that. As you probably know, that has been planned as a mixed-use development. We all sort of know where residential is, so there's some residential and commercial. But I think we need to get a better idea on where the demand's going to come from before we make a, a recommendation to the Authority Board about the, what the, the best use of that property is.
And, and I think that, and I think that makes sense as far as the, the Poitras. And I guess, the, I think one good thing and one opportunity you have is if you own that land and control that land, you can deal with some of the issues that, that might come up twenty, thirty, fifty years down the road, as far as noise. I mean, you can, you can plan that, so you can maintain the flight paths that make sense, and design and plan the, that land, so you just don't have issues with anybody that might be living there by just making good decisions as far as where people live or don't live on, on that land, what's used for industrial, or residential, or commercial, where you'll have less sensitivity for, for noise issues. And one other thing I wanted to ask you about is, as far as the executive airport, can you give a brief update on that area? Because you mentioned the, the non-airport or non-aviation revenues on the main international airport, but as far as the executive airport, can you talk a little bit about what's happening in that, in that part, the East Colonial area, and what, what your plans are for that?
We're actually working with, with, we've been working with some of the city staff. We're working with a, a potential developer on the corner of Fifty and Rickenbacker, where the pizzeria Uno's used to be. So we're starting to see a turn in terms of the resident, or, or the retail development, because most of those leases, the, just as it's, to back up, the budget for Orlando Executive is about 2.8 million dollars. The bulk of that is actually funded from those commercial real estate leases. So we're seeing some potential for a development right there on a corner of, of a convenience store. We work pretty closely with Dean Grandin and your, your planning staff to make sure that we can look at issues overall, because I know that there's interest in the, the road behind that parallels, his name escapes me right now, Green, Fair Green, and, and realignment of that. We're looking at making sure that when we look into these longer-term issues, that we can coordinate that with the city's planning department. We also have seen some interest in some of the, there, there's another, a bank is looking at one of the sites up there, so the ones that are fronting, the parcels that we control, there are two large parcels that are, are managed by developers, one's Wine Garden, one's CREC. Those are controlled with, by them. The ones that we can control directly, we're trying to get, you know, good tenants there, credit-worthy tenants, so that we can generate revenue, and also, you know, be in concert with what the city envisions as that gateway that's coming off of, of 436 and Fifty.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Ortiz?
I was going to add to your answer there. We are working with the, with Goa, and with some of the business people and our staff to develop something similar to what we have done in South Seminole, to bring the business community together. So we will be working close hands with the Greater Orlando Aviation Authority staff to go ahead and work and to revitalize that area. That's part of my district, so you betcha we won't leave that behind. And I want to go ahead and, Chairman Calvert and Mr. Brown, I want to, both of you, I want to congratulate both of you for the magnificent work you have done at the airport, what you have brought to the table. And of course, we know that what happens at the airport is a direct reflection of what also happens at the city. So I'm going to take this opportunity to also commend our mayor for his vision, because based on that vision, of course, we work, you know, as, as correlation with the airport. When we have good venues, at city level, people want to come to the city of Orlando, that increases traffic at the airport. And of course, as we continue redeveloping responsibly, and keep voting for good venues to keep developing, we will see a lot more increase on tourism and everything else that goes on at the airport. I have a question in reference to the FTA. If we have any projections of how that is going to impact our tourism, or not only tourism, but what is, the increasing passengers coming over, based on this free trade agreement that we just signed with Colombia and some other parts of the, the world, South Korea and Panama?
Don't know. Well, South Korea, we don't have, at this point, I don't think, although this, now Boeing has delivered its first 787, there is some possibility we could get non-stop service eventually. But back to the chairman's earlier points about how you develop air service, that your question's Commissioner Stewart, it's a numbers game, so we have to demonstrate that there are passengers. Colombia, we're actually going to be talking to, JetBlue is interested in extending more service to Bogota. I think Avianca Taca is also very interested. And if you think about the demographics in the Hispanic community, as you know, Commissioner Ortiz, the Colombians represent a fairly sizable component of that. So I think there's some real possibilities with the service to, to, although Chile's not included, we have service into Panama City now. So we would hope that we can look at, as a part of our strategic plan update, some opportunities to put in some more infrastructure to handle cargo and cater to some of the airline needs, because if you can present an opportunity for them to do cargo and passengers, that's more numbers in your favor, to, to put it real bluntly. And particularly in, in Latin America, there's a lot of commodity export that we would like to be able to take advantage of, but sometime, the challenge is, of course, getting the backhaul, and what do you send back? So those are all issues that we're starting to work on. So I think overall, with Colombia in particular, I think there's some real opportunity to increase the traffic between Orlando and Colombia.
Well, I want to thank you for your leadership ever since we saw the two of you there. I mean, we've seen great changes at our Greater Orlando Aviation Authority, so we want to continue seeing those things happening. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Linehan, a follow-up?
Yes, just a couple. It's so strange, written down freight and cargo earlier, because we didn't talk about it. I remember in ninety-nine, when I made a trip for the airport to Tokyo, and one of them was regarding cargo, and, you know, the big national debate regarding the additional freight on trucks and the safety issues. So one of the ways, ways we were talking about getting more air traffic was to provide more cargo opportunities. So I know you were talking about the Colombian part, but what about internationally, period, whether it's Japan, China, whatever, on the cargo? And I know we, I thought we built a, a terminal just for, upgraded it for cargo. Where are we with the cargo component?
Right now, there are a couple of things. In, in the early nineties, we made a valiant effort, is what I call it, to try and get some of the, the perishable business from Miami, which has been their strong suit.
Right.
We didn't succeed very well at that. But there is a fair amount of cargo that still comes into the airport. What we're, we're trying to identify, and we've been going out and talking to the community, particularly the trade facilitation people, brokers, freight forwarders, as well as the customs folks. What, what we're going to have to, I think, figure out is how we position ourselves to take advantage of certain types of, of air cargo. Air cargo is very expensive. So it either needs to be something that has a very short shelf life, something perishable, for example, Chilean sea bass from Santiago.
Hello.
Or something that's very high-value and lightweight pharmaceuticals, for example. And we've actually, through Mayor Dyer's office, had some conversation with some folks here that want to ship pharmaceuticals out to Europe. So those are the things that we need to put together. Vicky Harmio is working with EDC, and they're looking at an investment study about trying to identify companies that have invested in international business in this area, so that we have a database that we can start working with and do some work on originating some business here that gets shipped over, as well as going over to Europe and looking at what kind of goods that they would like to come in here.
Right.
The challenge with all that is that, once it gets on the airport, it has to get off. And it usually is going to be by surface transportation, more than likely trucks.
So logistically, where we are stationed, in terms of highways, whether those trucks be able to move?
Yeah.
Because we were looking at Miami and Atlanta in terms of cargo, and how it would interact with our airport here, and what, what highways. Well, we've got the four oh eight, we've got the four seventeen.
Well, you've got the five twenty-eight, you've got ninety-five, you've got I four.
That connects to everything.
So I think those are the things, and we've got some distribution facilities here in this area, which you all know, because a lot of them are located in Orlando. Some of them have been used to, to capacity, but I think as we start to move out of the recession, or, and, and grow a little bit, I think you're going to see some opportunities to, to utilize that and work with those folks.
Well, thank you very much. I, I think we sort of forget the cargo component and the issue regarding those big trucks on our highways, and the fact that we're now going up and increasing the weight of those trucks, that's going to become a safety issue for everybody driving a car. So people need to keep their eye on that issue. But that was one of my points, but the other was, I heard Caesar talking about trains. So you literally, we are about to launch Sunrail. I mean, it's in the pike, it's coming down, and this is very important for the airport, isn't it?
Oh, it's, it's extremely important, and you know, just maybe a month after I was, you know, elected chairman, that Congresswoman Corrine Brown called for a congressional hearing in Miami, and you know, there I was going to, just on the job for, on my high-paying job, for less than a month, and I got to go and testify at a congressional hearing on intermodal transportation. But the idea there was, and there were a number of people, from even from our delegation, and in Miami and all that, they were down there to testify, and of course, we took our drawings that we have of the, of the south terminal, and also, you know, some of the train and all that. So, but they achieved, you know, Congresswoman Brown was very proud that we were the only ones that had such a, you know, those sketches over there that looked, you know, very, very, of course, very professionally done. So the idea there is that we could, and part of the, what I said is that we can do it. We can, you know, accommodate rail there. So that's the issue, you know, that is so important, I mean, you know, to facilitate our seventeen thousand-plus people that work at the airport, it is extremely important when we're finishing all the way from, you know, from the main point all the way to Poensiana, it's going to be extremely important, because I know from working, when I worked for the large bank, we had employees that came all the way, all the way into Volusia County to work in Orlando Central Park. So you have that.
I think Sunrail, aside from light rail, when I became interested in transportation, is the, the best thing since sliced bread, because it, it will be able to move people. And I know when we did FDOT, or something we did with Sunrail maybe, it showed the connection with the airport, and how we can move passengers, how we can move local people, I mean, from one community to the other. Commuter means you're going to commute somewhere, like in your car, put the car aside, park and kiss, park and ride, or whatever, and get to work. So to see the station, the proposed station for the airport, to me, I think anyone in Orlando would just want to look at the, the technology of it all, the, the, the architecture of it all, too, that could be, and will be. So I was very, very happy when you talked about the, the component regarding Sunrail, and how it's all interconnected with our intermodal transportation systems here. So I appreciate all that you brought to us today. I love talking about transportation. Thank you.
And sometimes planning is all about vision, and sometimes it's fortuitous, because it's fortuitous, I think, that that coal line from OUC happens to run right along the airport property and connect to Sunrail. So the right-of-way acquisition, or the right-of-way is available very easily, instead of having who knows how much it would cost if you actually who knows how much it would cost if you actually had to acquire all that right-of-way to reach the airport from TAF. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Phil, thank you. Marcus, Carolyn, thank you for being here. And we'll have your items on the 2 o'clock. I know, Phil, you're probably not coming back. Mr. Chairman, you're going to be here at 2? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that will conclude our workshop today. Thank you for tuning in, and for those of you who joined us here at City Council Chambers. Let's go right into Agenda Review. Commissioner Sheehan is up first today. Commissioner?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Commissioner Linehan?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Enges?
Yes, Mayor. Item A4 referenced the resolution authorizing a special election for City Commissioner for District 1. As I was looking at this, as relates with the quarterly reporting times, because that didn't seem to be kind of clear in there, as relates with, well, the question is, what are the quarterly reporting times?
Same as everybody else. It would be, that date is consistent with the election date that has been set for the mayor's race in districts 2, 4, and 6. So they would be consistent in terms of reporting as well.
So then, I guess the question is that they, because we've already gone into some quarterly reporting.
Right.
Right.
But I don't think anybody's filed in that race yet.
And then the other question was, when does a person actually file to run for, file their intent to run for this particular seat?
Same time as everybody else.
They could do it today.
Okay. All right. All right. That's what I wanted to know, because it was kind of unclear to me. And that's all I have on the agenda.
Okay. Commissioner Diamond?
I'll hold my comments till 2.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Don't have anything.
Commissioner Stewart?
I'm all right.
Okay, so we'll have redistricting hearings. Commissioner Enges has a proposed amendment, that I understand has been worked out, and Commissioner Ortiz has an amendment, so we'll take both of those up during the hearing. We also have an appeal at the end. Anybody have anything? Commissioner Sheehan? Commissioner?
No, I was just going to ask about redistricting, whether that had gotten worked out. So now, we have a visual to be able to see what areas we're talking about, the proposed changes going into.
Yes, and actually, there was a memo with that, that should be in your office. And if it's not, just let somebody know, and we'll get you one.
Okay. I wasn't clear on the map, that was the only thing. I got the legal description, but I don't think I got the map.
Okay, there are maps that show the little crosshatching of, there's some minor modifications between District 5 and District 6, and doesn't touch anybody else. Your district does not change at all.
Okay, that's fine.
And the changes are between 5 and 6, and then Commissioner Ortiz is proposing to extend District 2 down to take in some property that doesn't have any residents in it.
Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Commissioner Enges?
Nothing.
Commissioner Diamond?
No, nothing.
Commissioner Ortiz?
No, sir.
Commissioner Stewart?
Along the same lines, I was supposed to get something electronically, I thought, on Friday afternoon, which I did not receive. Was there something that came in also?
Related to the districting?
Did it come in Friday afternoon?
Come up, Byron.
What's a hard copy? Hard copy only? Okay.
And there's a slight change to District 4, as well, as part of that, so we'll stop by.
Was it just that part of Florida Center, down at the?
Absolutely.
That's fine.
Right, no people, if I'm not mistaken, no population.
As long as that's the only change, that's fine.
That was it.
Okay.
Soto is coming in the sixth.
Okay, then we're adjourned, convene at 2 o'clock for a regular scheduled commission meeting.